The Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Jeff Free. Whoop, I did it. By Councilmember Tommy Harvey. Please stand.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this day, and we thank you, Lord God, for today's pass. We thank you, Lord, for those who are here. We pray for them. We pray for those who may be sick among us. Lord, we pray for those who are going to seek employment. We thank you, Lord, for their service to the city. We ask that you give them favor, and, Lord, we thank you for all that they have done. We pray that you give us erection in this council, and we continue to do those things that's beneficial to this city. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Larkin?
Here.
Mr. Irwin?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
All present.
Need to approve the minutes of the June 21st, 2016 regular meeting and the correct May 17th, 2016 regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel, please cast your vote. We have an add-on?
Yes, sir. We have one add-on today. It'd be new business number 11, adopt resolution authorizing the replacement of a laborer two position in the city garage. First and final reading.
May I move that we add this item to the agenda?
Second.
Do I have to ask the audience?
Yes, sir.
Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote. Need a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I'm waiting on Mr. Harvey and Mr. Free.
I did.
Second.
Counsel, please cast your vote. Ceremonial matters. We have Ms. Ginger Corley with the legislative update, and also in our honor and presence today, State Senator Beryl Peacock, if you would like to say a word as well. You want to... Your choice is to go first.
I'll try to be quick, and certainly I'll let Senator Peacock come up and speak, because I do want to thank him in front of all of you for his help this session. We spent a long time in Baton Rouge from February 14th through June 23rd, which consisted of two special sessions and a regular session. And the amount of information that comes out on a daily basis is almost impossible to keep up by yourself. So it's a team effort. I know with your staff, too, I can't do it alone. It's tremendous help having a senator like him look after our business and the business of the Bossier community, too. So, thank you, Senator Peacock. I submitted a first session report to the mayor on the fiscal matters. The state was facing a $2 billion shortfall, and Governor John Bill Edwards called them in after he was sworn in to raise the revenue. They raised $1,200 million in the first special session, and of interest, I think, to Bossier was the additional penny the state tacked on to sales tax, which obviously raised the price of purchasing goods and other items in our communities. The bulk of that money they raised is going to sunset on June 31st of... I'm sorry, June 30th of 2018. It was a temporary penny. There were some suspensions on the existing four cents, too. I know it sounds confusing, and it was confusing. It was a lot of last-minute negotiating, but it was vital to keep certain services operational for the state government and to keep the state budget afloat for the next term. They did not raise what they needed to raise, you know, depending on how you feel. Probably shouldn't raise any taxes, but they have to keep government running. We rolled right into a regular session, which was a general session, and we could not debate fiscal matters. However, we had numerous hearings on the budget, the role of local government in the state budget, and I think that's going to be a focus in the next year on how much the state supports what we do at the local level. And oftentimes, our stuff, the city stuff, is involved in that. They throw us into that category, but the bulk of the funding through House School One is the minimum foundation program, which is our local school board funding issues. I'll mention at the end some studies that we're going to be involved in, but just a quick recap. Again, I could talk on everything that we had going on, but specific to Bossier, you know, we follow anything that affects us or could take our ability away to regulate things on the local level. You know, the drone issue is something the mayor has me follow as well. We utilize that during the flooding. There's always bills that try to take that authority away and allow for the state to have some regulation. We were successful in protecting that. There were a number of firefighters retirement system bills you'll see in there on disability benefits and calculations of the employer contribution rate. I've sent those to you in your report you should have in front of you. Excuse me. There is also, there was a new fee tacked on for the 911 districts that you probably heard about that will fund... Each parish is 911 district, and I want to mention that to you, because it'll be a new fee on your 911... I mean, on your prepaid calling cards and on your wireless service. I know our Bossier folks were active in that, and that's why I wanted to bring it to your attention. I've listed those two bills here as well. Capital Outlay had a lot of changes, and there's one bill also I'm going to mention among another in the special session. Right now, the capital outlay budget is roughly $4.4 billion, and we don't have enough money to keep state services open, therefore, we don't have enough money to fund projects. They're really trying to wean local governments, which we call non-state entities, off of that. The governor has publicly said his priorities are deferred maintenance in higher education buildings and roads and highways. There's more requiring... Reporting requirements on our end, and I'll work with Mrs. Glorioso on getting those requirement deadlines met, but they want status updates, proof of local match for anything that we're going to be asking the state for. The good news is, we've always had our local match. We've always been able to show proof of that. You know, the bad news is, going forward, I'm not sure how much more streamlined they're going to make the process, but we're still going to go fight for it. That was one thing Senator Peacock was very helpful in. I'm trying to get the money owed us back at least this fiscal year, and then we'll go forward on what our priorities are for asking the state for future funding. We have to finish the lighting project on 71. We have some money we spent on a potential building out at the CIC. We need to get our money back for that. And then past that, we'll work with the city on where our priorities are on asking the state for future funding. Things... I always tell the mayor this and the city attorney, we fight more on keeping us out of issues that we don't want, and there were a number this year. There was... Our fire department was very instrumental in helping me on a bill where emergency medical personnel would have to determine if someone should go to an urgent care center or the hospital. Again, the goal, I think, of this senator and the state was to get folks out of the emergency room and put them in more critical... I mean, in urgent care facilities to be dealt with for cost reasons, obviously on the budget side, but we were able to not defeat the bill. He turned it into a pilot study for East Baton Rouge Parish, and we'll let them see how that works with their fire department before we come and bring it up here. There are a number of resolutions that passed, one of interest, I think, is going to be good for our area. The gaming control board asked to develop a study committee to look at our gaming laws, rules, and regulations. You oftentimes hear the 30,000 limitation square footage is just not enough for them to work with. They've got restrictions on them other states don't have. There's a study now. The Attorney General, State Police, and the Gaming Control Board will be participating in, and we'll have a seat at that table. I'll monitor that committee and report back as necessary and get participation. We didn't get a capital outlay bill, as I mentioned, in the first session. We got it in the regular session, I'm sorry. We got it in the second special session, and we were successful in getting our projects back in. So, going forward, I think it's a new day in Baton Rouge without spending too much time. It's a shift on where the priorities of state government should or should not be. We have the Streamline Sales Tax Commission, of which we have Mr. Norton that sits on for us, which is very beneficial. They meet quarterly, sometimes more often than that, in Baton Rouge. The state's still talking about state centralized collection of taxes. I know that's something local government is vehemently opposed. I think, you know, this governor, having a brother who's a sheriff, also probably won't go that way, but we also still need to participate in those efforts to make sure, you know, we're collecting our revenues. We also have the Task Force on Structural Budget Changes and Policies, and that goes back to my original comments on how much the state should or should not fund government and how much they should give back to local government to be able to raise the revenue. We need to do our job up here. So that committee's meeting every Friday now that session's out. So I'll continue to report back to the mayor and to all of you on where we can benefit from some of those policy suggestions. That will ultimately come into a bill next session. I know I've talked a lot, and I could continue to talk a lot, but I've submitted the report to you. Please review it and email me or call me, ask me questions. I'll do another summary. On the second special, we only had one bill that we ultimately worked out, and it was not worth putting in the report. Also, while Senator Peacock is here, I'll let him talk about Jimmy Davis Bridge on the money that we were able to keep in the budget, the capital outlay budget, and on the scope expansion, which I think is also beneficial for the area. The last page of your report, I like to just summarize what's on the Constitution... I mean, on the November ballot. I'll also send a detailed summary of, you know, the pros and cons of that for your district offices so that you have it in the event that constituents would call you. And again, I'll be happy also right now to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Just asks one. On the body cam, that study, that's the task force, do you know the mindset of those?
So there was a bill this session, and I think it's... I listed it in your report, and I'm going to... It was the regular session. Oh, here it is. Senate Bill 398. It was on whether or not footage worn by a law enforcement officer was subjected to public records and how much of that. They did pass a bill which limited some of the footage that was a public record or not, and it's just touching on a touchy subject in the law. As a result, they filed the study resolution. Katrina Jackson, Representative Jackson from Monroe filed it. They're going to look into it further to see if they did the right thing, if they need to go further or not, but I did put that in our list to monitor in the interim, since it involves our law enforcement officers. And I'll provide information to the city attorney.
Thank you. Yeah, great.
Thank you, Ginger, for looking out for us. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Dave. Mr. Montgomery.
Senator?
Good to be back home. I'll tell you that you're very well-served with Ginger Corley. Through the legislative process, things start moving very fast. You might have a bill that you might not know is on the agenda. The agenda's pointed... Posted, you have 24 hours to know that your bill's up, so having Ginger down there representing the city of Bossier, also working with Bossier Parish, is money well-served. I have a good relationship with her. I know she talks to the mayor a lot through the process, and then we talk also, but I do know that sometimes people say, well, do you need a lobbyist when you have representatives and senators? And I don't necessarily know what's going on in the House of Representatives. I'm focused on the Senate and where those bills in the House and vice versa, so I do think it's very well-served, and I'm glad to be back home, as I said. From February 14th, Valentine's Day, through the 23rd of June, I'm glad to be home and get caught up and take a little vacation with my sons and stuff, so.
Great.
But I'll be glad to answer any questions that y'all may have.
Any questions?
Ginger said you were going to brief us on Jimmy Davis Bridge.
What we did on the Jimmy Davis Bridge, we amended the language in it to where not only could the money be used for a rehab of the bridge, but it also could be used for engineering and design. So we put that in the capital outlay bill, and you'll see that as an amendment that we put in. And through the process of working with the mayor and El Cog, with Mayor Tyler in Shreveport, with the governor's office, with DOTD, that money was there to where now that the money that was dedicated for the rehab can be used to do the engineering and design work for the new bridge. They didn't fully fund it, but it does. My hope is that with the roughly $23 million that the state had to rehab, that could be for the 20% match. And the environmental assessment has been completed now. When Secretary Wilson first called me about canceling the contract with the contractor, I mentioned, well, now that that's been done, that the environmental assessment's been done, is a possibility. And I know that started some Will's working with the mayor and with NL Cog, and something that they heard from this community that that's really what, long-term, this community needs is a four-lane bridge with pedestrian crossing bike path and really with the Teague Parkway, with Clyde Fan, and it's a gateway to our community. And that's something I've... As DOTD, when you're designing this, we want something that we can all be proud of and that says where... What this community's all about.
How long is that environmental study good for?
It's... I think once we start. I mean, once they start the ball running now, to be exactly, I do not know. Now, they can update it. I'm sure they'll have to tweak it, but once they've started construction, you know, it's done, and it has been completed, and it's taken a long time.
I hate for that to go to waste.
The money in capital outlay I requested four years ago, and that was something that DOTD said, we're working on this environmental assessment. That is something the federal government requires. You have to have that in place to get the federal match, so that piece of the puzzle's there.
Thank you.
Mayor?
I was just going to ask Senator Peacock. People ask me, well, how soon do we think we'll see this being built? And I tell them, well, basically, it's a function of money, but I said if I was guessing, I'd say eight to 10 years. Do you have any feel for it?
I hope it's not eight to 10 years. Al Kessel used to say that whenever you get into a big project, it's a three-legged stool. You have your local government, your state government, and your federal government, and you need all those legs. So we need our congressional delegation to help us. We, of course, have our local delegation, and I feel like we have a commitment from the state to do that bridge, too. And I do, in talking to the regional office here, they've said they've seen a lot of traffic, email communications going back and forth, so this wasn't just a, oh, we'll say we'll do it. There's activity happening within DOTD. Now, the engineering and plans have to be done first, so that's the first step, but I'm hoping not eight to 10. That's too long. I want... That's one thing. DOTD takes too long, but we've got the environmental assessment done, so that's a big part of it, so.
Hope you're right.
Thanks, Senator.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Thank you for serving us, and we greatly appreciate everything you do in Baton Rouge.
Well, thank you, and if you ever need anything, call me. Always, you know, I'm back home now. You don't have to call me in Baton Rouge, but it's good to be back here, and I appreciate y'all doing it, and I appreciate the investment you make in having Ginger down there representing you. Thank you.
Any committee reports? Unfinished business?
Adopt an ordinance to appropriate $150,000 to come from the sewer capital contingency fund to be used to purchase property immediately west of the entrance to the northeast wastewater treatment plant, with the purchased property to be used to construct a new alignment for the Red Shoot levee. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance to stabilize the north bank of the Red Shoot bayou at the northeast wastewater treatment plant. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance appropriating $130,000 from the Rimvo Gaming Capital Projects Fund to split the cost of master planning the National Cyber Research Park with the Bossier Parish Police Jury. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance providing additional overtime funds for Public Works. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance to conduct the sewer sub-basin BC-21 rehabilitation. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance appropriating $65,000 from the general fund fund balance to provide overtime funding for the Bossier City Fire Department. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance appropriating $3,264,700 from the 2010 utility bond issued to repay a portion of the utility cost for the downtown re-envisioning project. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance appropriating $335,300 from the Series 2016 sales tax bonds to refund the remainder of the utility funding for the downtown re-envisioning process and appropriating the remaining balance of $4,93,877.90 to replenish funds from the 2014 Utilities Revenue Bond Fund of $21,236,415.20 that were used for projects not listed in the projected projects for the 2014 Utilities Revenue Bonds. Final reading?
Mr. President, I can make a motion that we delete this from the agenda today.
Second.
Any questions from the council? Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote. New business?
Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading. Petitioner, Regio Roberto Angel. Location, 2142 Airline Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. Request conditional use approval for on-premise consumption of high and low content alcohol at a restaurant.
Excuse me, Mr. President. Before we move on, that vote just said we pass number eight.
Yes, sir. I can't change it that quick on the fly, so I have to... I'll go back in and change it, change the wording in just a little while.
Okay.
But I've got it on my paperwork that you deleted it.
But our motion was to vote to delete it.
Right.
So Rex's audio is correct.
The audio is correct, and what I have in the minutes will be correct. I'll have to go back and change on the computer later on. I can't change it that quick.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sam?
Vote. Bring it up.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Sorry, I got off track. It's been a while. I'm a little rusty at this spot, so.
This is a new location for El Mariachi Restaurant. This particular address has had alcohol before, as the previous tenant did not serve alcohol, so they lost their zoning... Alcohol zoning approval on that, and Mr. Regoberto Angel is asking to have that reinstated back at that address.
Where is that, Sam, roughly?
It's in the old CC's Pizza location. It was Suki Sashi... Saki sushi for a little while, and the last tenant was Jordan Seafood.
Oh, okay.
He was moving there. So it's a little small strip center up there on Airline Drive.
Don't they have another one up there? El Mariachi?
Uh, there's one at the Plex. I believe he's going to this location. Have a little room.
Yeah.
And he has a location in South Bossier.
Not too far from the one that's in North...
And in Red Shoot. Very successful with these.
All right. Any questions from the audience? I mean, counsel, questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading. Petitioner, Manuel Padella, B2B Consulting. Location, 1129 Bellagio Boulevard, Bossier City, Louisiana. Request conditional use approval for on-premise consumption of high and low content alcohol at a restaurant.
So moved.
Second.
And once again, a similar situation. A new restaurant going into this site. Previously, it had alcohol from one of the previous tenants, but last tenant did not sell alcohol, so they had to come back for their approvals.
Questions? Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Thank you.
Adopt an ordinance declaring that an emergency did exist in the city of Bossier City, which affected property, public health, and safety due to Red River flooding and providing funding for emergency actions. First and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the promotions of one clerk two to clerk three and one clerk three to clerk four. First and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one permits and inspection department employee to replace one building inspection position due to retirement. First and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution supporting restoration of passenger rail service between New Orleans, Louisiana, and Orlando, Florida. First and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution to fill two vacancies in the Public Works Department. First and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Mr. Irwin? Approve report of closeout change order for the Sun City Pluto Lift Station elimination and increase of $157,766.86. Total cost of contract with increase $475,571.86.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing $600 per month as incentive pay for the assigned director of building and permits. First and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the fire department to replace two fire line positions. First and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Can we try that one again, gentlemen? I'm sorry.
That was a louder.
Everybody cast your vote again, please.
Mr. Williams, Mr. Free, and Mr. Larkin. There we go. Adopt a resolution authorizing replacement of a laborer two position at the city garage. First and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote. That concludes our agenda. I wanted to make a public announcement, too. I think we have a group from the Clay Tennis, North Bossier Tennis Center, and we're going to have a workshop, and I'd spoken to Mr. Boyd earlier prior to this meeting beginning so that y'all... I think he's going to get with everybody and outline the meeting for next Tuesday. It'll probably be immediately following our agenda, which roughly should be around 3:15 to 3:30, so I wanted to let you all know, and he's going to be in touch with you as well, so thank you all for... thank you all for all your comments and so forth, and we look forward to a healthy workshop next Tuesday. Anything else, Mayor?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Oh, Senator, one thing I had. Surely, they're not going to paint the bridge purple. I mean, that's just my request, so anyway. Thank you all for coming, meeting, and turning.